Calm down.
Okay.
Good evening and welcome to tonight's regular board meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order at compliance with official notification. Oh, call please.
Brooke Taylor.
Here.
And all right, here.
Nick Schumacher.
Here.
The Asman.
Here.
I'm here.
President Olson.
Here.
This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education Health and Public. It's on the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is time for comments by members of the public during the meeting as indicated on the agenda. Members of the public wishing to address the board on any of the topics included on tonight's agenda may do so by signing up on the public comment signup sheet prior to the start of the meeting. The board requests refraining from making any comments involving personally identifiable information about students, staff or administration. Comments should be respectful focused on the items being considered by the board be restricted to three minutes in length. It's time would you all please rise for the pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Action taken at today's meeting will be final, if otherwise noted. First up is comments by members of the public. We do not have anybody signed up this evening. Second item is disposition of minutes from August fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
It's a motion and a second to approve the minutes from August fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed. Who carries? Third item this evening was report superintendent. There were no action items. There were no discussion items. They had two informational items. Committee of the whole meeting on September fifth. UWS Chancellor Renee Walker gave a US UWS partnership presentation, which was pretty thorough about the spare plan that what they're hoping to accomplish from the university standpoint and talking to us about partnership and with Saha. So it was a pretty in-depth presentation. There's a meeting coming up on the thirteenth.
This week?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Monday, Wednesday. And that is that when the regions come?
Think so.
Yeah. So hopefully they'll they'll have a good meeting that there'll be really some not strong arm tactics, but making the regions realize that it's time that UWS and the community benefits from funding their behalf to move this plan forward. And our second presenter that night was Principal Danielle Parrish of Northern Lights Elementary School, and she gave an update of their plans and how they're going to meet their goals for the school year. Our board committee reports, operations committee, action items. There were no action items. There were no discussion items, informational items. There were.
There's a new.
We have a new one.
Right.
It's just information.
So the new item is cooperative strategies presents the criteria survey feedback from the community.
And we have it for we had it tonight because the survey closed on Friday. So we wanted to wait until the last minute to share our most updated information. But we have Rich, Andrew and Diego. Or Justin.
Justin.
So should we pass it to Justin first?
Sure thing. Good evening, everybody. I'm going to pass it over to Andrew. He's going to run through the survey results. And just kind of give an overview of the responses, the themes that we saw throughout the throughout those responses and some data that accompanies it.
All right, I'm going to share my screen here with the presentation and the information provided. So as Justin said, I'm Andrew Bishop with Cooperative Strategies, and we're here tonight to discuss the results of the public survey. Just as a reminder of where we are in the process, we did meet last August to discuss the boundary criteria. So tonight we're going to share a feedback that was provided by the community through the online survey. So our first question on the survey asked the public if they were aware of the redistributing process. And as you can see, the vast majority of respondents were aware, a rate of ninety-six percent. So very high knowledge of what was going on in the district.
We make your screen.
We can only because it's part of that.
Adam left, can't you? A below, over, over one. Think you can? No, never mind, sorry. Sorry, we were just trying to make our screen bigger here.
Okay. Are you all ready or are you still working on that?
Um, I think you can go ahead. I think this is large enough, we can make it.
Okay. So the next question we asked was about the respondents affiliation with the school district. And what you'll see is the vast majority of respondents, seventy percent were parents or guardians of superior students. Another twenty percent were school district staff. Nine percent were community members and one percent were students. The next question we asked was about the elementary school assignments of the respondents' home addresses to see where these responses were coming from. And as you can see, there's pretty broad representation across the district. However, two areas stood out with twenty-one percent of respondents being from the Northern Lights Elementary Attendance Zone and nineteen percent being from the Great Lakes Elementary Attendance Zones. Next, we asked a similar question, but it's where students in each household were currently attending. And it should be noted that the figures represent the percentage of respondents. Therefore, there can be responses in more than one category. You can have students in an elementary, middle and high school. So we won't, you know, these percentages won't add up to seventy percent. They are percentages of the total responses of the survey. So one thing of note is about seventy percent, seventeen percent of survey responses didn't indicate that they had students currently attending schools in the district. So that could be other community members, maybe district staff without students and such. Next, we asked the respondents to rank their criteria from most to least important. And these criteria were first discussed with the board in August. And as you see, the most important criteria to the public was to minimize the movement of students to new schools. So reduce that movement where we can. The the next most important criteria was considering transportation efficiencies and minimizing commute times. And the third was to have balanced utilization amongst its school facilities. And the least important criteria of survey respondents was creating contiguous boundaries and utilizing geographic elements and as boundary lines. The last question on the survey was an open-ended question, which allowed the community to provide additional feedback that wasn't addressed in those criteria questions. And based on our review of the of those comments that were provided, there were things identified that we've summarized here on this slide. And as you'll see, those those themes were prioritizing the best interest of students and their education in the boundary decisions. There were concerns about the disruptions of students' education and social lives due to boundary changes. They were concerned with maintaining smaller class sizes and reducing bus ride times for students. Suggestions to focus on diversity and socioeconomic balance within the schools. Just general concerns about the closure of Lake Superior Elementary. Calls for more transparency and accountability in the decision-making process. And there were some individuals who suggested that they may consider alternative education options. This map here is it shows the distribution of respondents from that open-ended question based on the elementary attendance boundary of the respondents. And you'll see that the vast majority of respondents of those additional feedback were from the Lake Superior Boundary. So the ones who are most greatly affected by this change. And then with Northern Lights and Great Lakes also providing higher percentages of respondents. And then this is just a recap cap of our project timeline. So we're at the options development stage coming forward after this meeting, and we plan to be preparing some options in September. And we'll be bringing those to the community in October. There are community meetings to be held on October sixteenth and seventeenth, where we will discuss these boundary options with the public, and then we are going to return to the board on November sixth, and then a special meeting on the thirteenth to finalize these boundary options. So now we just wanted to know if there are any questions from the board regarding the survey or information shared.
I assume we'll get this emailed to us, the results, so that we can see it.
We're going to post it on the website at the end of the movie or at the end of the meeting, sorry.
Is there a way to see the actual comments and not just the?
Majority.
Yeah, majority or put together comments for the slideshow, but to see all the comments in general?
Oh, yeah, I did email Dr. Starzakian spreadsheet with all the open-ended responses and the same presentation.
I'll forward you the entire email and then in addition, he will put this presentation on the website as well. Or, yeah, he will.
Does it show the actual, I know percentages are on there, but the actual number of respondents?
Oh, that was the question I was looking for on the slideshow. How many people responded in total?
There was six hundred and ninety-nine total responses to the survey.
Six hundred and ninety-nine?
Yeah, almost seven hundred. I think we had a hundred and sixty-three open-ended responses.
That was my next question.
Oh, okay. Can you tell if there were repeats or people doing the survey many times? Same person or not?
Um, I guess maybe, I mean, I got the IP addresses on there, but yeah, that's not, I mean, I really.
They did not do that analysis.
Yeah.
All right, it was anonymous. Right, yeah.
And then as far as the October community meetings we're talking about, right? Is this something that they will be present at?
They're going to physically be here, those meetings. They're going to actually facilitate those meetings. Do they recommend that board members attend these community meetings to sit in? I think so. Yeah, I mean, we're all, yeah, several of us are parents or grandparents or, yep. Any of you are welcome to attend either or both or not, yeah, yep.
I will note that in the past, we have coordinated when that's the case, just to ensure there's no violation of open meeting laws and those sorts of things. But to the extent you want to come, absolutely. And I think I think the community would be happy about that.
Yeah, we could make a public notice as well, knowing that there might be more than three. Okay, any other questions?
No.
All right, we appreciate your help. We'll be in, we'll be in touch. Thank you.
So much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good day, everyone. Thank you.
You too.
Steve, I think it's important too that the community knows. I know I've had several people ask me about the boundaries and what do we know? And I, and I respond the same way. We know the same thing the community knows right now. And so everything that is out there is everything that we know as well. So we're trying to be as transparent as possible and open, sharing everything that we possibly can. And all that information is also on the website. I think one thing too, that's important that I saw in some of the open-ended questions that again was on this PowerPoint is just a reminder that there's not an intention of increasing class sizes in this process. That we would use the same class size ratio when we redistribute students across schools. So there's, that was not the intention of this process.
And that's been the same message.
Right.
Very beginning.
Right.
Anything else?
All right, also at the committee, the whole meeting on September fifth, Ella Olson, Director of Activities, presented the new facility use fee schedule effective one-one-twenty-four. Pat Gillan, our Director of Transportation, was also here and provided some transportation updates. With that, I accept a motion to accept the Operations Committee Report.
Motion accept, second.
Motion in a second to accept the Operations Committee Report. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Budget and Insurance Committee Action Items, Gifts, Grants and Bequests. The administration recommends approval to accept gifts, grants and bequests received in August, two thousand twenty-three.
Move to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a section, second. Accept the gift, grants, bequests. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Were no discussion items, informational items. David gave us a brief review of the Fund Ten Expenditure Report and the Fund Ten Revenue Report. If there's nothing further, I'd accept a motion for the Budget and Insurance Committee Report.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second to accept the Budget Insurance Committee Report. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Policies and Rules Committee, Action Item. Administration approves, opposes the approval of changes to the following policies based on the older recommendations in order to be in compliance with federal law updates. This is the second and final reading. First one is the second reading of policy zero-one-hundred definitions.
Next up.
Second.
It's a motion in a second to accept the policy zero-one-hundred definitions. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. The next one is the second reading of policy zero-one-two-two, Board Powers.
Motion accept.
Second.
Motion in a second to accept the policy zero-one-two-two, Board Powers. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next, the second reading of policy zero-one-four-two-point-one, The Electoral Process.
Motion accept.
Second.
Motion in a second to accept the policy zero-one-four-two-point-one, Electoral Process. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Second reading of policy zero-one-four-four-point-five, Board Member Behavior and Code of Conduct.
Move to approve. Right.
Motion in a second to accept policy zero-one-four-four-point-five, Board Member Behavior and Code of Conduct. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Second reading of policy zero-one-five-two, Officers.
Motion accept.
Second.
In a second to accept policy zero-one-five-two, Officers. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Second reading of policy zero-one-six-five-point-one, Regular Meetings.
Motion accept.
It's a motion in a second to accept policy zero-one-six-five-point-one, Regular Meetings. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Second reading of new policy one-four-two-one, Criminal History Record Check and Employee Self-Reporting Requirements.
Motion accept.
Second.
Motion in a second to accept the new policy one-four-two-one, Criminal History Record Check and Employee Self-Reporting Requirements. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Second reading of new policy one-four-six-zero, Physical Examinations.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion in a second to accept new policy one-four-six-zero, Physical Examination. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Second reading of policy eight-four-five-zero, Control of Casual Contact Communicate Communicable Diseases.
Can't accept.
Second.
Motion in a second, accept policy eight-four-five-zero, Control of Casual Contact Communicable Diseases. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Second reading of policy eight-four-five-one.
Prediculousness.
Prediculousness, head lice.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion in a second to accept policy eight-four-five-one, Prediculousness Head Lice. Any further discussion against me?
I just want to bring up the fact that I struggle with the fact that the kid can go, the child can go back to class after having this, because if they do spread it to somebody else, then that student then does a missed class, parents have to miss work. So I'm just not, it's kind of like not understanding.
Are you saying same day?
Same day, they can go back to class if the parent just is not able to or chooses not to pick them up from school.
I think that's been a concern for many over the years. I know even as a sub, it was always, you know, kind of concerning, but I know the nurse said that that's pretty standard.
It is standard, but.
Protocol and what they recommend. And then they do what they can to, you know, pull the hair back and, but I know it's.
Be be in any violation of any statute.
Yes.
By removing a student from the classroom?
I know this is the recommendation from the county and from the state. That's why that language is in there.
Recommendation. Keyword.
I don't, I don't want to say whether it's breaking any.
I would.
realities. He's not here, yeah.
I mean, I agree as like a parent, I get it. But as a this, this role, the question lies, what do you do with the kid and who watches the kid all day long? First day out. What do you do with the kid? I guess, I mean, I brought the same question last, last week, because spread lice from one kid to the next kid and before you know it, thirty kids and a teacher has lice. And it's just much of a problem, but what do you do with the kid?
I guess I'd like information about how students, it's typically transmitted. My understanding is it's like sharing hats or having your jackets next to each other. I know Bryn said last week, they don't like jump.
Yeah, I.
Right?
Right, so they don't jump. Right, it would not jump from your head to Steve. You have to be like in close contact.
Right, and I think that's where the majority of transfer happens.
Which is why it's more of a problem in the elementary school.
It is, and it's no different like strep throat is not spread through sitting like this, it's through sharing a drink or touching, yeah. So it's no like settings, giving someone ibuprofen who has strep throat and sending them back to class. You're not treating it, you're not getting rid of it, and you're exposing other kids to something we know is there. Just think for the, for the better of all the kids in that class, there's a risk that we're putting them at and.
I think there is, I think again, I said in like this much last week, what do you do with that child if their parents not like? Is there somebody in the school that you can send them to and say, you're going to sit here the whole day?
I think the reason in here is because we have students um situations where they would miss class for days over the course of a school year. And so I know our school nurses take lots of protections to, if you were, some of them are staying with, go back and those kinds of things. So I think that's why that language is in there is more for those chronic situations as opposed to someone going off straight. Yeah.
Let me assess this and could get some with lice. The next, the next day, according to our policy, right, they go home. We have no live, no live lice. They come back to school the next day, the nurse checks them. Correct. Parents, I tailored it out there because they know their kids fell with lice. In that case, can I go back to class or what do you do with kid at that, in that case on day two?
I did want to add that it has happened. That stopped member contract lice. And that was a big deal because it involved a whole cleanup of their home as well. This was quite a while ago, but.
And finding us out for them.
Yeah.
But then we talked about bus to get a kid goes home with lice, the next day they take the bus. Are they prevented from getting on the bus? Do they get on the bus, like what happens there?
They do.
Every sentence can't discriminate as a head lice. So we've had where they have lice that day and they ride the bus home.
Are they isolated so that they're at a seat with themselves? They're not aware. And how that's embarrassing for.
I know, it's too like, that's worse to me, I think, for all of the children than.
Do you know a timeframe?
Sorry. You know, no, that's okay.
Do you know what timeframe it takes to get rid of lice? Like if, if someone was a true, like do a normal cycle.
I thought it was seven to ten.
Had everything available. Like.
You don't deal with this a lot in your role, do you? Not, no, I would say you're. Yeah.
Right.
I don't have like, I'm, I'm going to say mine are estimates, they're not because it's case by case. And it, it is like to finalize and make sure all those bits are on.
Oh, seven.
There happens at home because of some cleaning, um bedding and things like that.
You actually don't have to clean bedding. So I know because I'm a nurse, but you, it takes seven to fourteen days to fully ensure you have gotten rid of lice. Because if there's a live lice, they can lay the eggs, but it takes them seven days to hatch. And then it takes them seven days to be able to lay eggs again. It can't live on an object for more than twenty-four hours. So like as far as cleaning the home, like you don't really have to do that or the buses, as long as they've been empty for twenty-four hours.
Have to, but you have this urge to do.
You do, oh my gosh, you, you have the urge to bake everything up and everything, but you, but if people understand how to actually treat it and get rid of it, then there's more, but that's just depends on that. Oh, of the two, for two weeks to confirm that it's actually gone is what it takes.
So the main concern is that this child is being sent back into the classroom and that.
My concerns to not give everybody in the school the ice. Everybody in the class likes.
We're talking seven to nine to ten to twelve to fourteen days.
Can't keep it.
Spread it if there's no live lice. You can only spread it if there's live light. So the fact the nurses are checking them when they come back, that's all you can do and that's perfect. But if there's live lice and they're being sent back to class, then there's that risk of it spreading or even going on. If there's, you know, sitting where they read and there's a pillow or whatever, a rug, then another student's there. You really would have to isolate it to ensure others aren't exposed.
Through the years, how big of a problem has it been?
Nurses do a really great job. Yeah, I mean, our nurses do a really great job of monitoring and supporting families and chronic situations, they do a lot of work in helping students and families. So we have a lot of students that have this. I remember too, the school does a good job of even doing some of the cleaning. They would say they were bringing in this light or something after school. I don't even know, but it's supposed to deal with that. What?
So that's what they would say. You don't have to do that, but that's, what do they do if a student comes to class with a fever or come to class with a fever and goes to the nurse, but the parents can't pick them up?
They typically lay in the nurse's office, yeah.
So in any other circumstances where there's something contagious? Flu, fevers, COVID back in the day? What would you have done with the kid? Those days you weren't sending back class, though.
Right, so parent contact. If the parents are available, they come and pick up the student. If they're not available, they have, you know, the cotton in the nurse's office. Rest of them. But have you stayed separated?
So I guess then what would be the difference with lice? And we're operating a Zoom opportunity maybe in this day and age of technology?
Well, I don't think we want to get into virtual classrooms. Is that what you mean? I think that would be all.
Pretty easy to turn on a camera and still be part of something.
Yeah, but at the elementary, they do so much small group and independent work as part of their lit circles and such. It's not quite the same.
Good.
Do whatever you, I mean, you, you have a motion to adopt this. So if you're going to change it, you'd need to make a motion with the proposed changes. Does that make sense? Just pretend to lean just towards the recommendation and this, I think, has been. Just pretend to lean just towards the recommendation, and this I think has been probably the standard for quite some time since I can remember. I get the inconvenience, it's, it really is, it, it is. But that's what it, it's called, I think, like a inconvenience or a, I can't even remember if I helped you phrase it, but it's not like a, an illness. I, believe me, I don't want, like, I dealt with it about a decade ago and it is. I don't know.
You know, it's like, I'll just say this, like, we had our meeting, we talked about this. And our policy, we have a policy that says parents come pick up your kids immediately. We all know fortunately, that that's not always gonna happen, but that doesn't mean we gotta give the red, the green light in our policy to allow parents not to come pick up your kids. We can make a policy that says, pick up your kids, keep them home till the lice are gone and not give green light for anything else. On the side, we all know that's not always gonna happen, like with fevers and flu and stuff like that, and we got the app for that in the school, but and we could still have a policy that shuts it down, knowing that deal with it case by case.
You know, the other thing is that it, it just doesn't stop at the parent, and you might know this a little bit, but I I recall that if you don't get a hold of the parent, that there's a secondary person on the list that you can contact, let's say like a grandparent or, I mean, you can go down that line and try to find somebody. I know, know parents want to be the first to be notified and everything and to document the fact that we made the phone call, we sent an email. Ever, ever sending a text to somebody, but I guess I'm watching what, what we're doing. We, we do have steps that we have to follow and it's just not the parent. So it could be that we could get somebody else that's on that emergency list to come.
I think they try, but times they're not available. I guess I want to go back to Ed's point, like this isn't the norm. And that's kind of what you're saying, like the norm should be parents come and pick up their child, right? Could we say the reason that language is there is for the situation I said earlier, for a student who is chronic situation where there would be missing multiple, multiple days over a course of a school year? Would you prefer if it said if a student can be picked up, that they may remain in the classroom? If the situation is affecting the kid in a more chronic does that make sense? You know what I mean? For the expectation is parents come and pick up their child, right? But if we're in a situation where a child's facing truancy or chronic absenteeism or chronic health condition. I don't know, I was just trying to offer a suggestion.
Yeah, I mean, to a level there's gonna be kids that we gotta take care of and deal with this.
I mean, that's really why that sentence is there, is to deal with the chronic situations, not. I would be curious to what, how many kids actually aren't picked up? Is this really a?
That's kind of what I'm, I was kind of like, I was, yeah, I would guess not.
That's what I'm saying, like our policy shouldn't be geared towards what that one kid happened here, one, one kid, our policy is to be broad and encompass everything. So, but if we start saying like we may call home, we may not, they may pick up, they may not, we may, like, we're opening the door to allow stuff to happen. If we create a policy that says kids will stay home till they're no live lice, blah, blah, that's our expectation. But we all know in the background, the expectation not to be met. And kids will come to school and we'll deal with that. I mean, we have to deal with it, it's not what we do, but again, I'm saying we don't have to green light that behavior in our policy.
I agree, I think adding that to it is, we're asking for it, asking for more problems.
So having that, having that sentence in our policy, they may go back to the classroom. Okay, we're green lighting them to go back to classroom. If we just take that out, we're saying we don't want back in the classroom because of the lice. But we know there's gonna be some exceptions.
So here's the, here's the problem, if we don't put some sort of qualifier in there, we might have a situation where we'll send the child back to class because it's appropriate, and then
How will we put it next?
Someone will say, yeah, that's.
How about we write in?
I think the only exception really should be if there's chronic absentee is I'm facing, that's why they would.
They're not, they're not saying write in ex- accepts, exception. Should all else fails, you know, or something, you know?
Only exceptions we made if there's students facing chronic absenteeism and, I don't know.
I like that.
I just feel like if there's not that language in there, then people will say like, you said he can't be in here, and then there might that be that exception on a rare case in a school where they do need to be in the school. Does that make sense? Catching all this, Ann?
Yes.
So we would need to have.
Need to amend or make a amendment to amend.
Who made the motion?
And you know who made the most initially? So I have to say all of that that we're amending, or can I just say I make an amendment to change? All right. To include the exception, to include the exception of those with truancy issues.
Chronic.
Chronic, chronic. Let's do that because
You'd add that to the end of
last sentence where the remainder of the school day.
Well, we would say they would not go back to class unless the exception is that they're, they're facing a chronic.
They may remain. You could write, they may remain in the classroom if they're facing chronic.
If the chronic is facing chronic absenteeism.
Yeah. Or the remainder of that day.
I think that gets at.
You get all that, Maria?
What was? Oh, but that was for the committee of the hall. Can you put it in parentheses? Because the sentence doesn't quite specifically work, yeah. It says if they're facing chronic, that, that.
Give him a hat.
All right, there's a motion and a second to amend previous uh, motion to include in perens, and, and we do have to work on the dramatics, but if they are facing chronic absenteeism.
You think that other school boards around the state are having this discussion like we are?
How long do we spend on lice?
Discuss lice before and it went on for a long time.
Okay, all right, well, good. This is not.
Unusual. We can end this conversation right now by saying aye.
Clarify, um, so Diana, you're a nurse. It's in twenty-four hours for live lice. Off the human body. So is that what, um, policy, just want to clarify, so unless they have live lice will be able to get back to?
It says in the policy that they will be checked for live lice and they're not allowed to return.
If they have.
All right, is there any further discussion?
Do we have to reread this all again a little time or is?
This is it, good. I guess I was.
All right, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. All right, next, determine next steps regarding the vacancy of the fourth and policy zero one four two point five vacancies.
Didn't decide, so. Uh, motion to accept what's up there.
Yes. Second, so there's a motion and a second to accept the policy one four two five point, point five rather vacancies. And in that discussion candidates will submit a letter of interest, which will be due by next Monday, September eighteenth by four P M. To the school district administrative office or by email to Ann Schultz. So the letters are supposed to be addressed to me, but then everything has to come here and then Ann will put the the, um, packets together for everybody. So is there any discussion on this?
I am, I don't have concrete reasoning, um, why I'm having second thoughts about this, um, and maybe I'm the only one. Um, but I don't know that it's the right thing to go through with appointing someone, and so then in that regard, we would have to reconsider the next policy and adding an E in there. Again, I'm not sure if we're in too deep now, uh, when I talked to Kyle about it, he said we can revote absolutely, but again, I don't know if, because we've already started the process, if that's not the appropriate thing to do. Um, but I'm, I'm just not.
Procedurally, today's vote's final, not last week.
Yes, and that's why Kyle said, yep, yep, I know.
Guys need to decide if practically if it's the right thing.
And that's what I mentioned is it didn't say in red that this is final vote last week, this is, day is the final vote technically. So maybe we jumped the gun by sending this out before the vote tonight, I don't know. But I guess I'm having second thoughts, and maybe I'm the only one, so I guess I would like some discussion on it.
I would, I would still say what I said last week is regardless of whether it's been served or not, I think it'd be knowing that we already had a seat open and a seat to fill, I think it'd be inappropriate to change the policy, the benefits. You know, our needs as a board essentially, even if all of us wanted at that point, someone our policy didn't dictate for that, didn't allow for it, and it'd be inappropriate to change it just to fit our needs. We can change, certainly change it after we go through this step, so that doesn't have, so we have that option in future, should there ever be a future. Um, but I don't think we should do that now, I think we should leave it as is.
I don't know that it's changing it to fit our needs though, because I think that there could be perceptions the opposite way as well. Um, so again, I think it's how people view it, but.
So my take on this policy is that we're following the policy as it currently is, and that's why this motion had to come up and to be seconded. To move forward to today for a final approval, because that's what we have to be doing according to this policy.
That is correct, yeah. Because you would have had to have gone through two readings with E on there. Does that make sense? So you could have picked other choices besides the.
And I do know that in the past it has happened where there was an opening, I can't remember if somebody passed or somebody quit the board, but we opted to not fill it. I think, because it was, it was during the time when we were voting on the contractor for the new schools. I distinctly remember it was that time period that we only had six board members. Because we had decided prior to that not to fill it. And for, for quite a while, a month, a week, I forget, but we were like deadlock three, three on who the contractor was gonna be. So until somebody changed their vote, it was three, three, I can distinctly remember that. And it was due to the timeframe, you know, it might have been four months at that time, it's like, by the time we go through the process you're down to three months. You can't, it's a common sense thing at that point, what makes the most common sense.
Well, maybe, but.
I mean, what, what happens if it's a month? You still put it out there?
Well, unless, if we change the policy to add an E that says we don't have to choose someone, then, then we wouldn't have to choose someone, but state law dictates that we need to follow policy. At this point, it's nowhere in our policy to not appoint someone, so that's just not even an option right now. Even if it was done before, maybe state law was different then. Maybe it wasn't, maybe it got missed, but that's what state law is right now, so we have to follow the state law and what our policy says.
Yeah, I guess that was there then, Kyle chimed out, I don't know what he said.
Preference said, if it was my opinion, I'd leave it open too, but I'm also above, I, we need to follow the policy and it's too late to change it just to suit my need.
And to go back to your point about if it was a month, I think the statute talks about you have to fill it within so many days, so I think it was longer than a month. If I remember, I don't, do you remember what it was?
It was sixty hours.
Yeah, so I think it was two months.
That, that had to do with something about a November.
That's any better, but.
Month of November. So, I, I mean, we're, we are in the process. Again, this wasn't a change of the policy, this was to have a discussion about the current policy. Um, I did contact each one of you individually and asked if you wanted to fill the position and or leave it vacant. We were all in concert that we would, um, leave it open, we would not fill it. However, after, uh and we sat in our policy meeting and, and Ed brought that, but then I had also caught I didn't catch all of the state things that you did, but we we have to follow our policy, in my opinion, we have to follow our policy and we have to follow the state statute that says that.
And I'll say the other caveat, I wasn't here, but no, since the process technically has started already.
And we had started looking at other boards, uh, to see what kind of example language you guys could potentially adopt, if that's of interest to you, so we'll provide that to you. I guess if we're ever in these situations again, I, I think that again, if we have two readings for it, it's hard because we get that information right there and then, and we're supposed to make a decision like that, and you're like, yeah. And then, so it's like, it's good to have some time to process it, come back and vote, so we probably next time shouldn't like have the, the, I don't know. Maybe just wait for the second vote to move forward for sure. So I guess something to maybe learn by, you know.
Before starting the process.
Yeah, yeah, let's make sure we have both votes before so that we all can digest and then come back and make a, a, a educated decision, a decision we're confident in.
I think the reason it was done this way though, was because I think we wanted to get somebody on the cow for.
Yeah, I mean, and we want to, yeah. If we're gonna do it, that's right, yeah, sooner is better, but.
I, I, again, I go back to, I agree with Ed, like, and also that the fact that we've already started the process, right? But the optics of it, looking that, again, it's, if we change this now, it's serving our needs to, that none of us want to fill the position. At this point, I think we fill it, you know, we add an amendment to the E to it. You know, if, if there is a next time kind of thing, um, that's, then we have the option within so many days, months, or whatever it is.
And, and, and another clarity, I guess I'm struggling with, with, with this a little bit. The clarity is in the next informational item, where we decided as a board because we wanted to talk about an option, perhaps of not filling it, that we moved that particular first reading of vacancies to November. The bullet point, the last bullet point on this page had nothing to do with the first reading. I shouldn't say nothing to do because it did, uh, in, in respect that we had to follow the policy as written. So the determining next steps regarding the vacant seat again, was directly related to our current policy. The informational item of the reading of that policy was moved to November, so we have the opportunity to say leave it as is and or add, for instance, letter E. So that, that's my take on it. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. There were no discussion items, and then the informational item, the first reading of policy zero one four two point five vacancies. Able to policy update until October thirtieth at the cow meeting.
Is that date correct?
Yes, that's, we're having our hearing, that's the November cow, because we have to coordinate it with the deadline. That's the November call because we have to coordinate it with the deadline budget hearing. Okay.
So then our call for November will be the thirtieth of October. Our regular board meeting will be the sixth, I think it is. And then the thirteenth, we've got the.
The special meeting.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion in a second to move the policy zero, one, four, two point five vacancies to October thirtieth call meeting.
Just informational.
Informational. So we didn't even need that. What are you doing, Steve?
It's just for fun.
It's just for fun. We're practicing.
A lot of us are new.
All right. Cool. So with that, do I have a motion to accept the policies and rules committee report?
Might as well take town.
Motion to accept. Motion in a second to accept the policies and rules committee report. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Teaching and learning committee, committee. Action items, none. Discussion items, none. Informational items at the committee, the whole meeting on September five. Crystal Hinsman, Director of Curriculum and Instruction, gave back to school updates. Carrie Saunders, Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, gave updates on seeking educational equity and diversity. Seed. Jennifer Willoughby, Director of Early Childhood and Family Services, gave an early childhood date. On the Personnel Negotiations Committee. Oh, let's say, thank you. Is there a motion in a second to accept the teaching and learning committee report?
Motion to accept.
Motion in second to accept the teaching and learning committee report. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Personnel Negotiations Committee, Administration recommends approval of the updated September twenty twenty-three new hires and separations report.
Want to approve.
Second. Motion in second to approve the administration's approval of the updated new hires and separations report. Or any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Administration recommends releasing Mary Hausner, social studies teacher at SMS for her twenty-three, twenty-four school year contract per her request effective August twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three with the liquidated damages provision enforced.
Second.
Motion in second to accept the recommendation of releasing Mary Hausner. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Were no discussion items and there were no informational items with that, I would accept a motion to accept the Personnel Negotiations Committee report. Motion in a second to accept the Personnel Negotiations Committee report. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Legislative Committee Report, action items, none. Discussion items, none. Informational items, the Office of School Safety secure secures funds to maintain operations for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year. From an OSS press release, Attorney General Josh Call today is announcing that the Wisconsin Department of Justice, DOJ, Office of School Safety, OSS, has geared one-time funding to temporarily continue its current life-saving operations to keep Wisconsin kids safe. Since its inception in two thousand eighteen, OSS has become a critical resource for students, teachers, school administrators, and educational communities across the state of Wisconsin by implementing practices proven to prevent violence in the schools. You can click on the full article to, to read that. So I think it's important, again, I said this last week, but that we stay on. It is such a wonderful program and, and we've benefited, benefit very much from it year after year and I know that there'll be a time where we'll need to get our letters together and and get our community support behind this too. With that, is there a motion to accept the Legislative Committee Report?
Motion to accept.
Second. Motion to accept second to accept the Legislative Committee Report. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Other reports by members of the boards. The first one up is the victim rights request form. So we received information from Douglas County. Uh, victim, victim witness services. So in our case with our board member, Mr. Stupak that has stepped down, has resigned. We are considered a victim of of the situation. So do know that you met with Kai, was not getting you and Kyle and Amy, I think, did you guys meet once already on?
Yeah, we reviewed the process. So what it included.
So we thought it was important that, that all of your new board knows what happens with that stuff. So there's a request form and stuff that we have to fill out. The name, the school district superior will put the address down. So the first page, I want to review this with you. Upon request, victims have the right to be notified in writing of all court hearings. We would check, yes, please notify me of all court hearings via email. Yes, please notify me of all court hearings via USPS mail, or no, I waive this right. I can tell you that we, we do get information. We have received two informational items, I believe, from I can't remember her name, Marnie. Was the lady that we got?
I don't know.
From the court. You sent, and you sent me some, I can't remember her name, but I don't think it was. Oh, yeah, it is. Tina. Our Tina Tendrup. So we've had two communications from her, just keeping us apprised of what's going on because there's been two, um, two dates, his next date is until December first. So we have been, I would be checking the, the email one because that's how our communication has been going. Upon request, victims have the right to attend all court proceedings and to be heard to speak in court if necessary, if any of their rights are discussed or decided. So we have a choice where we could attend all hearings. We could say, yes, I want to attend and we want to speak in court in my, if my victim rights are being discussed or decided. No, I waive this right. My, my preference, but you can. That's why we're here to discuss this. If we have the ability to attend a meeting, I think it would be. I think it'd be wise that I could be able to go.
Who are you talking about? Like the board would get the information and the board would be the ones to attend or is it?
I would think it'd be one person. And, and I would be. I, I think I would be the one that would attend.
And then you would be the one to get the emails. Would you share the information updates with us then or?
I'm not interested in that. If you want to go to court, you can go to court.
Anybody can go.
I don't care to have any doings with it. He got his own stuff to deal with. He can deal with it. Not our problem anymore. It's, we can continue with school board functions and not worry about that. That's my opinion.
I agree.
There's no purpose for any of us to, to go there or be part of it or do anything with it. It is what it is at this point. And that's a distraction for the rest of the stuff we need to be doing. My opinion.
I agree. I don't have a I don't have a reason to. I don't know that there's really a reason to us for us either. As far as that go, you know, with the final verdict, I guess. Read out the paper.
We have the last.
So Steve, what would be the reasoning?
I'm fine with that. I just, I just put it all there.
I think the court just says the crime was committed against the district. Like what's, what are we asking, you know?
But I'm just trying to think, what would be the reasoning that one would want to go or keep be, because it doesn't affect us ultimately anymore, right?
Representing the district or a district being a victim. We're making a statement that it was disruptive to.
Sure.
It's a standard form that goes. If somebody came and assaulted you or beat you up, you might want to be there. Somebody robbed your house, you might want to be there for that. This is slightly different circumstance.
Sure. Right. And speaking on behalf of the board is hard when you all may have different opinions in this situation.
Just a boilerplate. Let me send out.
Check all my notes.
Check all the notes.
Waiver rights. Well, let's redraw.
And I, and I'm fine with doing that. Don't get me wrong. Upon request, victims have the right to information about the final outcome of a case. And we would.
Whether you check you want it or you waive it, you're gonna see.
You're gonna see.
You're gonna see it anyhow, though it doesn't matter. Maria's gonna publish it.
And then the last one on that first page, upon request of the defendant is incarcerated, victims have the right to timely notification of defendant's release, escape, or death, but nothing at all. The next page of this, it talks about having the ability to meet with a prosecutor and contact the victim witness coordinator to talk about restitution or whatever comes out of that that hearing. I personally am not interested in that.
I'm still not interested.
The next one, the victims have the right to full restitution.
And that would be he would pay the district back or what are we talking?
Yes. My understanding is yes, that we could request.
What happens if you're a victim of crime, you can request. Let's say you're a victim of theft, somebody steals some, you're out X amount of dollars. You can request the DA's office at, if this person's convicted, I want them to pay me X amount of dollars that thing costs. So in this case, if we think that he cost the district X amount of money, we'd say hey, DA, we want to request this should this person be convicted. Then the DA would act on our behalf to request it through the judge and then the judge would determine whether restitution is warranted or not and how much might not even be what you're requesting. If you request a hundred dollars, he might say twenty is sufficient. You know, it's basically you're asking, does it mean you're gonna get, but it's on the table for the app. I was the same. I'm also.
I'm a, I'm a no.
Yeah, I think at this point. I don't think he threw it. He, he was here.
He was here.
He served. He did some of the work. It's not like he didn't show up, so.
And then the last one, we, we have the opportunity to write a statement and it could be read or just goes to the judge, so. I'm not interested in that either. Okay. So I just wanted you to know what we did receive and stuff, so. That situation if someone says, hey, what is, what are you guys doing? Both now it's on record. Okay. Uh, Vice President Albrecht was going to make a statement tonight, but we are not going to have that. That'll be done October. So maybe. So are there any other reports from any of the board members? I know that Ann is setting, has set up our visitations and everything. So hopefully you've got. Pick those and.
Visitations.
So I know I didn't.
Little visitations.
Can I request that we get the the, um, the interviews on the calendar? The interview date.
Uh, it is on that Monday, right? Oh, you mean like get a calendar?
I'm awful if I don't have something on my calendar.
Go over it. So yeah, you need to block it off. Yeah. Are you pushing those out?
So the plan will be very similar of last time. So the meeting will start at four o'clock. We'd be four ten when the candidate will, will come before us. There is a set of six questions. So each one of us will have a question to ask like we did last time. And as far as the vote, I don't see any reason to change what we did from the last time. Keep it considered.
If they need virtual, is that on the table again as well?
I would think if something happened like that, yeah, we'd be able to do that. I know myself being gone and everything, I'll, I'll have some access to internet up until Thursday morning and then won't have anything until the twenty-first. But I know that Ann will be sending you guys out everything because of the timeliness of it. It closes Monday, the eighteenth. So sometime in the nineteenth or twentieth, we need to set up the, the times for.
Can I make one recommendation?
Sure.
I did get feedback on the live streaming last time. It was unfair for candidates because some people got to see each other's interviews. So if, if it's important that it's recorded, I guess I'm wondering if we record it instead of live stream it. Like the live stream, the candidates got to see in live time the answers. So the candidates at the end had an advantage over candidates at the beginning.
Oh, and just put it out there.
And if it's important, you want it recorded, then we put it after as opposed to the live stream. Does that make sense?
We requested that they didn't.
Requested that they didn't watch it live. So some did for potential.
Potentially, potentially.
That's just smart.
I would have, I would have thought that they mean don't listen in, but that's me.
That was the, the feedback I got from the, from some community and staff. So that's why I'm sharing that with you as a. And if you want to keep it, the live streaming people live stream, but I thought that might be a nice way of.
You're just chomping at the bit to say something.
No, I just know some people want us to watch it and.
They can watch it after it's done.
After it's done. I think that's.
Yeah, I think for fairness, that makes sense.
Let's have them all come in, supply stream and set up offices.
That was another option. If you want to livestream it, they can all come at the same time, wait in the conference room and.
For two hours.
How bad do you want it?
Didn't move through it pretty fast the last time.
We did.
I don't care. Refer it.
Yes.
All right. So we'll record not live stream. Uh, district and program highlights, anything Dr. Stairs?
I just feel like we had one of the best stars to a school year we've had since I've been here. Felt really good and so many positive comments from variety of people. I hope you have the same feelings expressed to you. Um, so that was positive. Uh, we're Spartan, we're starting up our Spartan showcase again, but we have updated it. I feel like it needed some freshening up. And so we are going to pick a school every month and we're going to identify a staff person and a student who exemplify us, uh, what it means to be a Spartan. And so their, their colleagues will nominate them. And we'll, we'll recognize somebody from each building every month. So instead of it just being kind of a district wide nomination, we're gonna try to do it by building and also recognize students. We're gonna recognize them at the school, but they will all be invited to the board meeting to also be recognized by you. But we felt like, uh, some people, it's more meaningful if they're with their peers when they are recognized by their peers.
Can we, can we do it? Do we have to do it on the regular versus the cow? Like so many more people here on the cow that being recognized with all leaders here is.
I have scheduled all of the meetings, but I can, I need to redo that timeline. So we'll see. I'll see if I can make some adjustments with David.
Go through in the headlines comes up again.
If you're recognizing people, it's, it's nice for recognizing.
Their peer when they're here. Yeah, but there are people watching.
People versus all these empty chairs here.
Yeah.
I'm saying.
From each school and one staff from each school.
Yeah, cool. Yeah. Um, and then I am meeting with our new student representative, Autumn Cooper, and she will be starting in October. So we're meeting this week just to kind of, I'm giving her a school board orientation like I give other new school board members. So we'll meet, we're meeting with her this week. Other than that, good start.
Then finally, consideration of bills and pre-approved bills.
To pay the bills.
As a motion in a second to pay the bills. A discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed. Motion carry. It's this time. Do we have to vote on?
Just bang the gavel.
You can bang the gavel if you like.
This meeting is adjourned.
I like that.